Good afternoon and welcome to York County Council meeting for June 17th, 2024. I will go ahead and let folks know we have asked for the air to go down. We're all hot. I don't know if y'all are hot, but we are hot and we're trying as hard as we can to make that happen. Do want to say thank you for coming out here tonight. I know it means a lot to council when we have good participation from the community showing up to our county council meetings and we appreciate you being here tonight. Our first item of business is invocation and pledge of allegiance. Well, I'll recognize Watts Huckabee in District Six.
Thank you. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you tonight with many thanks for all the blessings bestowed upon us in York County. We thank you for our county council, our dedicated staff, the committees, the volunteers, and our passionate citizens. Please look over our meeting tonight by giving us guidance and discernment in our decisions. In your precious name, amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have one oath of office tonight, and that is Sam Leslie with Riverview Fire Tax Board. Mr. Leslie, if you'll come forward, our county attorney will meet you in the middle of the room and he will make sure to administer to you the oath of office, which you've been given many times before. We appreciate you being here tonight. We do appreciate the folks that serve in our fire tax boards. These folks serve on these boards without getting paid and they rarely get thanked and a lot of times they get criticized. So tonight's the night where we say thank you for what you're doing and we appreciate your service to our county.
Thanks. I'm glad to see you, sir. A privilege to administer the oath of office. It's another time for you and if you can, I can. He's kind of great, right? And so he has to solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
And duly qualified.
I do qualify.
According to the Constitution of this state.
Constitution of the state.
Exercise the duties of the office.
Exercise the duties of this office.
Which I've been appointed.
Which I've been appointed.
And I will to the best of my ability.
I will to the best of my ability.
To charge the duties thereof.
To charge the duties thereof.
Reserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of the state.
Of the United States.
Of the United States. So heavenly God.
Right, please. Thank you again.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
We do not have any appearances tonight. We do now move into our public forum session. Our public forum session is an opportunity, and this is something unique to our council. A lot of local municipalities and counties don't provide this opportunity, but we're glad that we do and we give citizens the opportunity to come and speak about anything that is within county jurisdiction. We do limit it because we do have an entire agenda that we have to get to action items. So we limit the speakers to two minutes. So when you come forward, a couple of things I'll ask you to do. As soon as you get up front, if you'll give your name and address very quickly and then move into your comments. What you will see on the screen is it will go to yellow when you get close to your two minutes and then it will go to red. And when it gets to red, my job is to cut you off, which is something I don't like to do, but that's the job that I have to do sitting in this role. So if you can kindly cut off your comments when it turns red, that keeps me from having to do it. I will tell you that we do have several public hearings tonight. There are four public hearings. If you are here to speak about a public hearing item, you do not have to, you can wait until that public hearing item comes up and then you are not limited in the amount of time that you speak. But when it comes to the beginning piece of that, we set aside a very limited number, 15 folks who can speak for two minutes. We do ask that you keep your comments to be professional. Do not attack people personally because this is our time to listen to you. This is not our time to answer questions or to defend a position. It's simply a time for council to listen to our community when they speak to us. And so we ask that you keep your comments to respectful comments. First item, first individual up. Hang on, let me put my glasses on. John McGarity.
You have to talk fast to get two minutes in. Thank you and good evening. Trip McGarity, John McGarity, 921 Harper Road, York, South Carolina, lifelong resident of Western York County. I'm part of a group effort with the city and state to bring a hotel into downtown York. The goal is to bring an exceptional asset into downtown that will drive investments, build storefronts, increase tax base, and support the growing community. We also intend to create a beautiful gateway to downtown in coordination with York's historic district. The two-year effort hasn't come without challenges, but in cooperation with the city and with the help of local state representative Tommy Pope and the endorsement of State Senator Harvey Peeler, the city received $2 million to assist with the project. At that point, we developed a mutually beneficial EDA revealing a substantial, substantial commitment by the city and development group. The final essential piece of that puzzle is a proposed SSRC agreement with the county. Under the SSRC, the county stands to generate 2.9 million in tax revenue from the hotel project over the next 10 years, where it currently has none. The developer guarantees a minimum $12 million investment, but it will likely exceed 17 million. This is a unique investment in a green, new market unlike anything York or Western York County has ever seen, and we ask that it be treated as so. Other parts of the state have seen similar concessions for hospitality recently, such as Georgetown Waterfront Hotel. It's exciting. The hotel in York has tremendous support. I have letters from city leaders, local businesses, and others who fully understand the proposed SSRC in the front of the county and agree with it. Got them right there. And we'll introduce them in just a second. We've been transparent with the city, school board, and county through this process and the response has been positive. So in closing, I simply ask that the council join the efforts of the city and state and vote in favor of the proposed ordinance. Thank you. I would like to introduce who we have here. Mr. Mayor, Mike Fuser. We have Stephanie, council member, Marion, Matthew, Kelly, Dalton, have representatives from the town, Jamie Patterson, Will Mitchell, a lot of people out here to support. So I know I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. If you'll raise your hand if you're here on that item, I'll just catch you on that. Thank you so much. Next, Quinn Thomas Smith.
Can I have some people?
Okay.
Quinn Smith, 6121 Charlotte Highway, York, South Carolina, 29745. Good evening, council. I'm here to support the change of the separation of use ordinance within the Lake Wylie overlay. This ordinance has stripped commercial property owner of their rights without any proper notification. It promotes high-traffic businesses to sprawl, creating additional curb cuts and increases traffic congestion. It has no future thought for inevitable growth and how to support future residents of York County. Due to public input meetings alone, property rights were taken away in 2022 without any notification. How would you like if someone re-zoned your property overnight without any notification? The answer that we've been given is that public input meetings were held where people put a check mark next to things that they didn't like to see on a sheet of paper. Is that how the York County Council wants to drive change in the future? Is that the precedent we want to set for how rights are given and taken? Our representative claims that she speaks for our district and what is best. The results of the recent election show that the majority of residents in District Two don't echo her voice. Commercial property owners in the Lake Wylie overlay are local residents who have worked hard for the land they own. Last council meeting, we had local farms affected by what has happened around them. It was universally agreed upon that night that outside influence shouldn't affect someone who has been there long before changes around them occurred. Why is this any different than commercial property owners? Change has occurred in Lake Wylie, and now you feel it is your right to tell someone what they can and cannot do on their property. I ask you, as a council as a whole, to seek a resolution that is consistent with common sense and smart growth planning. One person who has to fabricate support through social media and flaunt an image of checkmarks on a piece of paper should not have the right to take away a local citizen's right away. The public hearing in February, planning commission's recommendation, and countless vocal citizens all point to the ordinance being repealed. However, if our representative was given the chance, she would strengthen this ordinance. It is quite clear more than ever that our representative would prioritize being right rather than doing what is right.
Thank you, sir. Carla Pendleton.
I'm Carla Pendleton, 5930 Charlotte Highway, Lake Wylie. For quite a while now, it seems that District Two has been the dumpster fire of York County. Entirely too much of y'all's time has been taken up with you trying to put out fires there when there were many other issues for you to address concerning the entire county and not just District Two. Hopefully, by passing the third reading to amend the Lake Wylie zoning overlay ordinance tonight, these issues will be put to rest and you can get back to spending your time doing the business of the entire county. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jeff Ledford.
My name's Jeff Ledford, 2095 Cutter Point Drive, Lake Wylie. Well, here we are again, talking about this same flawed ordinance. Nothing has changed about this ordinance over the months since it was first discovered to exist, to the surprise of the public. It's still a bad ordinance. It's still taking landowner rights away. It's still not anything close to smart planning. It still goes against the Lake Wylie Small Area Plan that was adopted and approved by council years before this ordinance ever existed, and it still will hurt small business owners. The only thing that's changed is the result of the election on June 11th. The vast majority of the citizens of Lake Wylie voted for a change, due in large part to situations like this ordinance and how it came about to begin with. Others can talk about community meetings, which the county appears to not be able to approve ever happened, or Facebook polls, which can be easily manipulated, but you can't deny the results of the election where the citizens have voted for a change from the current direction and thought process. At the last council meeting, Mr. Roddy started asking questions about the Harris Teeter having to redesign the placement of their store and place their gas pumps close to residential houses. But the most important question wasn't asked. Why did the gas pumps have to be moved to begin with? Was it because the pumps were within 660 feet of another gas station? No. It's because the gas pumps were within 660 feet of a self-storage business. Now, what do these two things have to do with each other? This is how ridiculous this ordinance is. We're looking for someone on this council to stand up for common sense, smart growth planning, and to support the Lake Wylie Small Area Plan that already exists and to protect landowners' rights. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Timothy Frym.
Tim Frym, 300 Fox Trail, Lake Wylie. Thank you for having me up here. I'm totally against this 660 rule, and there's several reasons, and all the other folks spoke about it, but it has no thought put to it. The way it's set up, all these businesses that are not able to be put together are spread out everywhere. I have the opportunity right now to put a circle K on four acres of property that I own on 49 and what's called the Beehive, right beside Papa's Pizza that I just built and remodeled and leased to the owners that own other restaurants in the Lake Wylie area. We weren't able to put a walk-up window in or a drive-through window in, so now these people are having to go in and try to get in and out of here. You can't do it. It's pain. Why don't we do something with a little bit of sense and start using the roads that are attached to all this property on 49 that the county owns and start using, make it where to go from one thing and come out at Lake Wylie Road at the new red light, or the red light, and there's going to be a new red light. That road's going to be there. It's just common sense. This is a property rights stealing ordinance that should have never been passed. I don't know how it got passed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. John Gossett.
John Gossett, 5717 Lake Wylie Road. I'm speaking for the 660 ordinance also, as I'm not in favor of it the way it's currently written. I don't want unbridled, you know, growth that just everything and anything comes in, but I think we can do a lot better than what this does. Attaching five unrelated uses that are totally unrelated, it creates a convoluted ordinance that's just, it creates, it creates problems that were unintended. When we talk about the Harris Teeter, it was mentioned in the last council meeting that a council member has said, well, I've talked to the people in Padler's Cove and they're okay with the gas pumps being, with the store being flipped and the gas pumps being against the neighborhood. No, they're not. Several people in Padler's Cove have told me that they're putting their houses on the market simply because of that. You know, we got to look at these unintended consequences and say, no, we can do better. And we don't want to recreate 49, what happened down there. That's an example of what happens when you don't put a lot of effort, real effort, in thinking ahead and looking at what works best. We want to save 274 from having that same fate by using smart growth principles and practices that we now know a lot about. One turn in to multiple uses. And we talked about, there has been an argument of, well, we want to save what a little bit of real estate's left for restaurants. Well, that dirt goes for $2 million for a patch of dirt. Nobody's going to be able to buy that, build a store, and then have a restaurant there. We've got a restaurant in front of the Lowes in Lake Wylie now. It's been empty for years. Nobody can afford to buy it and pay the rent. I mean, it's just too much. So let's look at what works best and not have the same fate on 274 that's happened on 49. Let's clean this ordinance up and make it do what it should do instead. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Donna Forrester.
Hi, I'm Donna Forrester, 3328 Somersault Lane in the Carolina Orchards. I'm here for the second time. I have a question I want to ask all of you, and one answer would be fine. What have you done since the unanimous vote to not rezone the Sylfab area that should be heavy industrial and it is now light industrial? What have you done? I want to know. I want to know.
As I stated previously, this is not a time for us to engage in comments. Whatever comments you have, we want to hear what you have to say.
No, I have a question. I am a taxpayer. I'm here at York County. You were very happy that we were here. I want an answer to that question. Wasn't a letter supposed to go out to Sylfab? I can write the letter for you if you're too busy. Are you too busy? I mean, this is more than common sense. I've read. I'm very confused. What was that unanimous vote? What was it? Do you remember voting? Do you remember? You were here, you were here. I see a lot of faces that I didn't see that night. So what was that? Just lip service and you thought we'd go away? I need an answer. That's why I'm here. Are you giving me an answer? Why are you not doing your job? Why are you not giving me an answer? Am I not allowed to ask a question?
You're allowed to give your comments and we're here to listen to them. We don't engage in answering questions.
Oh, you don't engage?
Yeah, and there's not anything on the agenda tonight.
All right, my comment is do your job.
Kenneth Leonard. Morris Rothstein.
My name is Morris Rothstein. I live at 929 Sunrise Lane in Fort Mill. And first, good evening. I haven't seen your faces for at least a couple of months, but they haven't changed much. They save the best for last, but not today. I will state the best first. The best is the 5O zoning board of appeals vote against Sylfab. And Sylfab Solar Manufacturing is not light industry. Didn't take a scientist to figure that out, but it may take a scientist for you to figure it out. Thus, they cannot operate at 7149 Logistic Lane. The standards for light industry appears on page 557, chapter 114, zoning ordinance of county, South Carolina Code of Ordinance dated 2023. I'm glad that we found the ordinance and was able to present it to the board. This is law of York County. Law. No ifs or buts. It's black and white. Now, you said, Kristy, I have two minutes to talk. This is the law. We have to follow it. What will happen if I say, no, I want 30 minutes? What would you do? You would call over the officer and he would remove me. Same holds true for Sylfab. They must be removed, not because we don't like them, not because they're from Canada, not because they sued the US government and lost at the Supreme Court, none of that. We don't have to tell them to move because the COO is on a PR tour and saying that the chemicals are not hazardous.
Thank you, sir.
We have to move them because it's the law.
Thank you, sir. Scott Jensen.
Scott Jensen, 1581 Old Nation Road, Fort Mill. I'm also here for Sylfab. This is taken this weekend.
Yeah.
Into Sylfab parking lot.
Very good.
This was after they were rejected by the Citizen Zoning Board last month, unanimous decision, yet they are still moving forward. They posted, I think like a week later on their website, a press release from Canada saying that they're moving forward with a factory. Before, they said it was just an assembly plant. Now they're calling it a factory. Also, on the York County zoning website, it says clearly that the York County zoning code says light industrial does not include hazardous material treatment and storage, yet on the sylfabsc.com website, it says in their FAQ section, they state, "Sylfab Solar will pretreat any water we use," and they're going to use, according to DHEC, over 1 million gallons per day of water that they are pretreating, which is a violation of the York County zoning code. Also, York County zoning code says, "Light industrial does not include enameling." This is in the law, like the previous gentleman said, "Does not include enameling," yet on the sylfabsc.com website, in their FAQ section, they state, "Interconnect solar cells, they will be, they will do, they will interconnect solar cells through a conductive medium." I researched this. This type of processing is type of solar cell manufacturing is called closed space sublimation, which enamels the solar cells. They will be engaged in enameling, which again is in clear violation of the York County law, like the previous gentleman said. How are you continuing to allow heavy industrial factory into a light industrial zoning when the zoning clearly unanimously voted them down? They are moving forward according to the press releases, according to the trucks in their parking lot. They are building. They are currently engaged in heavy manufacturing. We need to get them out now. They are in violation of the law today, today.
Thank you, sir. Xavier Tufti. If y'all want to allow the other speakers to speak, we need to give them a chance to get up here. Xavier Tufti.
My name is Xavier Tufti. Live at 423 Shoreham Lane, Fort Mill, South Carolina. I'm also here in opposition to Sylfab. We are, please, please stop. Please let people speak when they're doing this. I appreciate it. Please stop. I need some time back. We are making a public request that York County Council force York County manager to write a letter to Sylfab stating the following. Based on the unanimous decision by York County Board of Zoning Appeals, citizen-run solar panel manufacturing is not allowed in a light industrial district. Furthermore, there is no support to approve a zoning change. Nobody in this room wants a zoning change to allow heavy manufacturing, period. Reasoning. Based on unanimous BZA decision, York County staff erred in their determination and this error was corrected by the BZA. If Sylfab claims that they have been damaged by this error, then York County has an insurance policy to cover such an error. That won't be a cost to the taxpayers. We have insurance to cover that. If the York County manager does not immediately send Sylfab the above requested letter, then Sylfab claims of damage would increase each day. This would be a waste of taxpayer money, and much worse, York County would be found negligent by not acting on a legally binding ruling by the BZA. Put simply, Sylfab lied to this county council. They misrepresented what they were going to do at that facility. It's okay for county council to change their minds if you were misled by a lie. Every single one of you was. We expect you to stand up and do the right thing. That's all we want you to do.
Thank you, sir. Daniel Graham.
Hello, Daniel Graham, Regent Park, and I'm in the one mile evacuation zone. Lucky me. I'm going to talk about Sylfab. DHEC looks at a pollution source the same way, no matter where it is located. They don't regulate it any differently. This is why it's imperative that we adhere to our zoning code, yours and mine. Fort Mill is not farmland. We are a densely populated town. If you put Sylfab out in the middle of nowhere, say in the middle of farmland, your potential risk is dead chickens. If you put Sylfab next to two schools holding 2,500 children, your potential risk is dead County council members, history is watching and so are your constituents. I'm going to share a little bit more information that someone just gave me. Based on the unanimous BZA decision, York County erred in their determination and this error was corrected by the BZA. If Sylfab claims that they have been damaged by this error, then York County has insurance policy placed to cover such an error. If the York County manager does not immediately send Sylfab the above requested letter, then Sylfab claims of damage would increase each day. This would be a waste of taxpayer money. That's my money, by the way. And much worse, York County could be found negligent by not acting on legal binding ruling by the BZA, thus allowing Sylfab to operate, could potentially void coverage by the insurance policy, which would be a gross mismanagement of York County taxpayer money. This is why, as a group of concerned citizens, we are requesting that the action be taken now. However, if no action is taken, Sylfab will continue to design and then construct facility to manufacture solar panels in a light industrial district, my home.
Thank you, ma'am. Caitlin Boyle.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Boyle and I'm a resident of Fort Mill. I'm here tonight to call attention to the South Carolina Department of Health and Environmental Control Bureau of Air Quality, response to public comment on air quality for Sylfab Solar. The page that I wanted to call your attention to and call the public's attention to is page eight of 23. And you will see on this document, if you look it up online, that the original analysis for the Sylfab Solar site was based on rural option model results. Right here, underneath the revision due to public comment, when they revised their nullification. when they revised their numbers and did it on an urban option model results, underneath the document says, "Note: The facility has increased the proposed stack height for the air scrubber stack from 19.7 feet to 70 feet subsequent to the analysis summarized above. There is a ton of misinformation online that there will not be a 70-foot air scrubber coming out of this facility next to two schools filled with children, next to homes filled with residents like this, and it is simply not true. You can see it yourself on the DHEC response to public comment." Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Victoria Herbst.
My name is Victoria Herbst. I'm a resident of Fort Mill. I am one of your constituents. I am a mom, and I work in biomedical engineering. Just like all my colleagues mentioned, there's a lot going on with Sylfab. That's what I'm here to talk to you about. I passed out some information prior to the meeting that I encourage you to peruse at your leisure. I really request it. There's some damning evidence in there. The picture that my colleague shared is of, the only purpose of that company is to do heavy construction, heavy industry construction. The main thing I want to talk to you about today is a job posting for Fort Mill from the Sylfab website. You'll also find that in your pamphlet. LinkedIn refers to the seniority level needed for this as an entry-level position. The third bullet point on page 1. Undertaking environment protection projects such as designing air pollution management systems. They're on their job request, on the job requisition saying, "There will be air pollution", and it's the entry-level position's job to figure out how to solve it. Page 2, you'll see on the third bullet, I'm sorry, fourth bullet point. They need to put a process together for environmental-related complaints. There will be them. It's in the job rec, they need to handle it. Most damning and concerning is they will need to develop, develop guidelines for the disposal of hazardous materials next to our schools. An entry-level position will need to develop that. I meet the criteria for this job. I couldn't do that. They will also need to act as a regulatory arm, self-reporting. Again, my colleagues have hit on the other points. I just want to reiterate them. There's a difference between error and negligence. We all make mistakes. It's okay. Once it turns to negligence, that's a bigger problem, not only for you, for me, the constituents, the taxpayers. The difference between you and me is you were put in your seat by your constituents to do what your constituents need and to protect your constituents. I also included a flyer in there that shows the evacuation zone. There are 52,415 people in that three-mile buffer zone. I am a full-time working mom of a toddler. I found the time to get all this information together today. Why hasn't the letter been sent?
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes our... Thank you to all of you who have showed up to council to speak tonight. We appreciate you being here. We have concluded our forum. That's 14, 15 individuals, so those are the folks who had signed up. I'm sorry. There was one person who, I called their name, and they didn't come forward. I think it was a gentleman, Kenneth Leonard. No, we've actually concluded our forum session, but I appreciate you all coming forward. Do we have a motion on our consent agenda?
Yeah, second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries, and consent agenda is approved. We move now to our first public hearing item. Counsel to hold a public hearing and consider amending and second reading of an ordinance amending Title VII of the York County Code of Ordinances by adding new Chapter 72 entitled York County Sheriff's Office Wrecker Service Regulations, providing the regulations by which all wrecker services utilized by York County Sheriff's Office will, Office shall be governed, to provide for the establishment and maintenance of a wrecker service rotation list, including wrecker responsibilities, to provide qualifications and criteria for wrecker services, to establish wrecker classifications, to establish a fees rate schedule for each class of wrecker and for related services, to establish a wrecker disciplinary policy, including wrecker complaint form, to provide for a public hearing, and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Is there anything from staff before we open public hearing? All right. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Motion, second.
We have a motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Atkins?
I have a motion to refer this back to the Justice and Public Safety Committee for further discussion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The matter will be referred to the JPS Committee for additional discussion. We move now to item number 2 of our public hearings. Counsel to hold a public hearing and consider third reading of an ordinance to amend the Code of County of York, South Carolina, Disposal of Waste at the County Landfill, Chapter 50, Section 50.33, in order to provide for an increase in fees for the disposal of municipal solid waste and construction and demolition debris at the county landfill, and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Is there anything from staff before we open the public hearing? All right. Hearing none. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Move now to item number 3. Counsel to hold a public hearing and consider amending and third reading of an ordinance to amend the County of York, South Carolina, Chapter 51.05, Water and Sewer Rates and Charges, Terms and Conditions of Service, Sections B2 and B10, in order to amend the water rate schedule and sewer rate schedule, and to provide for matters related thereto. Anything from staff? All right. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Motion to close public hearing. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
So moved, second.
Is the motion to approve? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we need discussion on this?
Yeah. So, just so, for the public's understanding on this, the adjustment on the rate proposal was modified based on an adjustment of a lesser rate based on what we got from Rock Hill.
That's correct, council.
Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody does know that. So they get back... What was the percentage of the difference?
At the last meeting, we shared with y'all that what we had heard previously from Rock Hill changed. Now, it's a 4% increase for both. Previously, I think it was between 5 and 10%. So we adjusted both down to that 4%.
Okay. All right. Again, I want to share that with the public. Thank you.
It's always good when it comes down.
And I'll just reiterate. Every time we have these water rate increases, I get calls from folks who live in the unincorporated areas. These rates do not apply to individuals who have wells. They apply only to folks who are on York County water and sewer. And I get that question every time, just making sure that's clear. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Move now to item number 4. Counsel to hold a public hearing and consider third reading of an ordinance to levy and reimpose a 1% sales and use tax subject to a referendum within York County pursuant to the Capital Project Sales Tax Act, SC Code annotated 4-10-300, SEC, as amended to define the specific purpose or purposes and designate the project for which the proceeds of such tax may be used, to provide the maximum time for which such tax may be imposed or re-imposed for a period provided by law, to provide the approximate cost of the projects or facilities funded from the proceeds of such tax, and the approximate amount of net proceeds to be raised by such tax, to provide for a countywide referendum at the 2024 general election, to permit the existing 1% sales tax and use tax to be reinstated and continue without interruption, to prescribe the contents of the ballot question in such referendum, to provide conditions precedent to the imposition of such tax and conditions or restrictions on the use and expenditure of such tax revenue, including utility relocation, to establish the priority in which the net proceeds of such tax if approved in a referendum are to be expended for the projects and purposes stated, and to provide a formula or system by which multiple projects may be funded simultaneously, to authorize the York County Board of Voter Registration and Elections to conduct a referendum, to provide for the administration of such tax if approved, to provide for the payment of such tax, to provide for the administration of the program, and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Is there anything from staff before we move into public hearing? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Motion to close public hearing. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, and this is directed back to staff, too. Can y'all just give a quick synopsis of what this is, so the public can have a clear understanding on this?
Yes, sir. This is going to be the Fifth Pennies Program. As many of our citizens are aware, York County was the first county in the state to put this in place, where we put a 1% sales tax on all transactions inside the county, and that money goes to our roads. We've invested billions of dollars in our county roads, and, you know, look at Highway 5, you spend the deadliest roads in the state. And now, I mean, it's a very safe road to travel on. This is something that impacts all the citizens across the county. When you look at what they're doing in Pennies 5, they've got resurfacing programs throughout the entire county. The program has involved, you know, I think this is by far the best pennies package that we're putting before y'all. We're going to be able to hit the ground running, again, just like in Pennies 4, by advancing the program, some funds upfront to get started. So again, this has been very successful in York County, and it's separated York County from the rest of the state. And it's been very exciting to audit these programs, it's the county's external auditor, as well as to have a part in putting these things together and working with the committee. We had a very good committee this year. I think two former councilmembers signed on that committee and did a great job. But again, something York County rightfully should be very proud of, as again, being the first in the state to do this, it's a great program for all our citizens.
Yeah. Kevin, thank you for doing that. I just want to make sure the public knows where this money's going towards, and the number of roads that it's affecting across the county is, it's a huge, it's a very large list. So again, I just want to make sure y'all know where this is going to.
I'll just echo one of the things that happened on the last pennies, which I think is a kudos to, it's basically teamwork. We put on the last pennies repaving, which doesn't require utility relocations or right-of-way acquisitions. So you get more road, paying for your buck, essentially. And what was done was we borrowed against our tax reserves in order to be able to accomplish that. That was 80 miles for $50 million. It was completed under budget and under time, and it basically, within four years of when the voters actually put, signed off to approve this. What I like about this program, and it's the voters who approve this. I mean, essentially, what we do is we allow this to come to you, and you're the ones who support this. I will tell you that there's not enough money to go around, and another aspect of this program is to increase that repaving piece. There are a lot of larger projects that had to be fixed, finished, and the cost of doing the bigger projects has, with inflation, increased a lot. But this is a program where if you want to get your roads paved in your county, this is the way to do that, and to have other people help pay you for it, because they pay for it through gas tax. So anybody who comes through in gas tax helps pay for our roads under that. Any other comments or questions from council before we vote?
Kristy? So, a lot of my folks here will be interested to note that this will go to widening and repaving 21, Highway 21 from Cap'n Steve's up to the interstate. So that process is going to start pretty soon, and so we're excited about that. I know you guys will be, too.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. We move now to our first item in old business, rezoning action. Consider first reading case number 24-21, tax map number 3760000060 to rezone from AGC to RUD, 3.0 acre portion of an 8.76 acre parcel in District 2. Mr. Buena? Do we have any comments or questions? This was a deferral of first reading from the initial.
Yep. I make a motion to approve first reading.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any comments? This is first reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries on first reading. Item number 2 of old business. Counsel to consider third reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 155 zoning code to modify separation requirements for certain uses in the Lake Wiley zoning overlay to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters relating thereto.
I make a motion to approve with two concessions and one change. In our last meeting, we removed the drive-through windows. So we'd like to, tonight, remove fuel centers from the list. We'd like to remove storage units, but address their positions along road frontage on major roads in a separate ordinance to be written as quickly as possible, right away, to retain car washes and oil changes as all uses, and to increase the separation to 1,000 feet.
Is the motion clear for staff? Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. So, the, one thing I want to make clear is that I didn't write this ordinance. So those of you who came up tonight and wanted to talk about me without saying my name, I didn't write this ordinance. This ordinance came about because many people went to public hearings, and those little check marks that you talk about, those are your neighbors. And they attended the meetings, and you didn't. And there are check marks and check marks and check marks. And what the people of Lake Wiley had asked for were some common sense, something that makes sense, so that we don't have oil change, oil change, oil change, car wash, oil change, car wash, storage units. The overabundance of these businesses are just absolutely ridiculous. And as I said last time, even those businesses probably don't want any more like businesses, because they're having to split a piece of pie, and the pie is not as big as they thought it was when they came to Lake Wiley. Businesses come to Lake Wiley, and they struggle. And the oil change places are especially not very busy right now. And I don't know how there'll ever be enough, you know, car washes. We've got so many car washes. It's just, it doesn't make sense to keep adding more and more of the same thing. So what the people asked for was a long list of things, and I've shown that list of everything. And you can come up here to this podium anytime you want to, but most of the things on that list, we've accomplished as a community. And I'm sorry if you didn't show up and you weren't involved at that time, and I get, you know, called out for only speaking to a few people. I speak to everybody who gets involved and steps up and has an inquiry or request, or that cares, comes forward with something that they care about. So the important thing that this council realizes is that we're the policymakers, and we make policy based on what these folks want. And I think they've made it very clear tonight that they're at the top of the organizational chart. And if they're not, then we need to redo the organizational chart, because it's a waste of their time to keep coming and talking and begging for things that are going to make life better, if we're not going to listen to them. And so these changes are the concessions that you... And so, these changes are the concessions that y'all have asked me to make in order to get this passed. You've asked me to make some concessions, to give in on some things. So, we don't want more car washes and storage units and oil change places. We don't want more gas stations, and we don't want more drive-through windows. That's fast food. And so, here's the concessions. Here are the concessions that we, as a community, the people that I talk to, and I'll talk to anybody, but here are the concessions. We've taken off drive-through windows. And Mr. Frye came up and he says he didn't, you know what, he didn't, he struggled because he wanted a walk-up window, but he never called me. He never picked up the phone and called me and said he was having an issue with this. The people who live down in Summer House, their biggest concern is the connection, not the fuel center with a three acre parcel between them and the Harris Teeter, but the connection to their neighborhood, and we're still working on that issue, because we're not the only ones that are going to deal with it down the road. We don't want to be the example. We don't want to be the ones in Lake Wylie that go, hey, we need to do something about this, and we get it fixed for the rest of you. What we want to do is have you realize that, hey, this needs to be fixed for us, too, not future fixes. So, second concession is we'll take off the fuel center. That means that Harris Teeter, who we're glad to get a Harris Teeter, it'll be a very unique version of Harris Teeter that you've never seen before, and so we want the Harris Teeter. So, if we remove the fuel centers, it means that we'll get the fuel center back where it should be over on Highway fifty-five, and we might even get the one over the Circle K that we probably don't want, but that's the chance we take when we make a concession. And then, storage units, good lord, we got enough storage units, and we understand why. Does everybody not have enough storage units? But we understand why, because people are on such small lots and small houses, they can't get their cars in their garages, because their garages are full of their stuff, and the most, the least economical thing they can do is go out and rent a storage unit, but that's their only choice. So, we've removed storage units, but we still don't want to look at them, so we're going to allow them, but we want to allow them where we don't have to look at them. They don't need to be on major road frontage. They need to be tucked back in somewhere. I'm happy, I'm fine with that concession. Car washes, car washes, I'm not willing to give in on the car washes, and I'll tell you why. Because, you know, we've got one lady here, and I do, I have, I feel for somebody that hasn't been able to sell their property to a car wash. The fact of the matter is that that property could be sold to anything. It doesn't have to be a car wash, and we've got enough car washes. So, we would like for everybody to come together and say, hey, we're going to do something different. We're going to find somebody that we want. Then there are places that'll come in and build restaurants and do things, and there is something that works where they all went over in front of Lowe's you just haven't heard yet. And so, the concession on the car washes and oil change places, I can't imagine another brand of oil change place that could possibly come, but there was a local one that wanted to come, and counties already told them no, and why would they want to come? So, the car washes and the oil change places, we would like for you to stick by us. We'd like for this council to stick by the people of Lake Wylie on those two things. That's what we have the most of. We do not need more. And we would like to increase the six hundred and sixty to a thousand feet. Now, we have spent a lot of time talking about this, and when you think about that we have four parcels on Highway forty-nine that we're talking about, it is kind of silly, and it does seem like a waste of time. But we don't have another plan in place. This is the only little plan we've got in place. This is the beginning of a plan that says, hey, everybody, we got to do something, so that we're not getting more and more and more of these overabundant places that crowd out the restaurants and the shops, and the little, maybe we got a little office park with some doctors' offices or something that wants to come in. Those are important things, and we've got to look to the future. If we had a blank slate, we could do it all over again. And when we talk about sprawl, my god, you can't sprawl in five miles. There's no such thing as sprawl in five miles. And you want things clustered together? We are clustered. Lake Wylie is a cluster. So, things are clustered together. And so, what I'm asking is for this council to give us two out of five that we've asked for, and send the revision or the new ordinance for oil, I'm sorry, not for oil change, but for the storage units, back to, maybe, I guess, to the zoning committee, so that that can begin as a discussion. But, you know, that's what we're asking for. The increase to a thousand feet doesn't really affect anything. It affects one thing, and that is it protects, there are a few neighborhoods, small neighborhoods that back up to Highway two seventy-four, and there's an old house there, and there was the threat of a car wash on that property, and those neighbors were upset, because they didn't want that beside their place. If we leave it at six sixty, that could still happen there. So, we would like to protect them, and increasing it to a thousand feet only protects, only changes that small area of Highway two seventy-four.
First of all, Allison, I appreciate, you know, you've walked through things and you've modified as we went, so I appreciate that. Thank you. The only concern I have with this is the thousand feet. And, again, you know, when it comes to sprawl and business, I'm concerned about it, because what happens is that, again, I know that you stated we probably wouldn't see that much, but when you're looking at a thousand feet in an area of that size, you start pushing things in areas that really, to me, make it not as practical, and it makes it, you know, I think the chance of sprawl under businesses would be greater. Again, you're extending it much further. So, again, that's my biggest concern with it, Allison. Outside of that, I do appreciate, you know, what you've done here with this change.
I'll go ahead. I'd like to echo what you just shared, Mr. Aldette. Appreciate you being open-minded to some concessions. I do want to ask for a few more concessions. So, I agree that if we spread it out too far, it seems best practices in development tell us that we could be creating sprawl, we could be creating more curb cuts, we could be slowing down traffic, because you have more ways to enter into a property. So, I, too, would ask that you consider reducing the one thousand feet in your suggestion, your motion, down to six hundred and sixty feet. Secondly, appreciate you including gas cells and self-storage. I'd sent an email out in January, I mean, June third, suggesting that we take self-storage out and have it two hundred feet from the main road, so I, too, agree that that makes sense, and that, like you said, is going to have to be handled in a separate ordinance. If we take it out of this, then we have to deal with that in a three-reading process. So, I support that. I would ask, though, for you to consider that vehicle service repair customization, car washes and detail shops, those are the only items left, only not be knocked out by each other, but only by the same use. So, if vehicle service repair, optimization, customization, if that, you had one of those that existed, it would be separated by another one six hundred and sixty feet away. Same thing for car washes and detail shops. And I think that gets us a sound ordinance.
I think that gets you what you want as a Rock Hill Councilman, but it does not do anything for Lake Wylie. And if you want to propose something, if you want to propose something for your district and your people, I'm not going to interfere. I'm not going to meddle in that. I'm going to let you do that as their representative, but I represent Lake Wylie to the best of my ability. And there are a few people who spoke here tonight, but there are a lot more emails that came in, and I'm telling you that if this council isn't going to listen to the people, then they either need to be a different council, or they need to save their time and energy and not come. And that's a shame. That's a darn shame.
Do we have any other? Allison, you've gotten a chance to speak once, Mr. Wat, I mean, Mr. Huckabee has, I mean...
He mentioned me, so I got to speak again.
Go ahead, finish to respond to his comments.
Okay. So, what's important is this is not sprawl. It's not sprawl. I sent y'all pictures of where these businesses are. There is nowhere to sprawl. I mean, forty-nine, we're talking about four parcels from the bridge to Publix. So, we're going to put in four things that aren't oil change places or car washes. I think that should be acceptable to you. It has nothing to do with a thousand or six hundred and sixty feet at all. That's what's there. That's what's available. Highway two seventy-four is, Jonathan, how many parcels are there on that little stretch?
We're principally talking about five points, because not much of two seventy-four has general commercial property on it, which would be required for these uses. So, just a rough guess, about twenty parcels total towards that intersection.
So, the last time you made a rough guess, it was in the thirties. It was way high, and they're, right now, they're about twelve total from, in that whole section, that are not developed. The other thing that we have made a concession on that I didn't mention is, if a business exists, there was a car wash in Lake Wylie that was sold, it was torn down, because it was a drive-through, you could go and wash your own car, and they wanted to put one of the little fancy neon ones in there, so they have torn one down, and that can be replaced. So, an existing business can be replaced by that same use. So, that's another concession. But it just lets me know that when y'all talk about sprawl and you're concerned about the thousand feet, you don't understand, you don't understand what we're looking at and what we're dealing with. I mean, I've supported so much that y'all have wanted. This is a simple thing that we should walk out of here tonight with this council's support.
If I can comment very quickly, please.
Actually, she didn't mention your...
Since I was mentioned by name, I'd like to comment. So, I think it's important to note that there are citizens in District Two that don't feel the same way you do, and those are the ones that have reached out to me, and those are the ones that reached out to the Lake Wylie Chamber of Commerce and said, we need a voice. We need you to speak for us. So, and they have come to meetings, and they have spoken like you all have tonight, those of you that are here tonight on the issue that's passionate for you. There are people that have been here on the other side of this issue that have clapped and had signs the same as you all have tonight. So, I think they have to be heard as well. And quite honestly, what they're asking for is for this ordinance to go away completely. But because the Lake Wylie Small Area Plan calls for something with some vision that's different, and the Lake Wylie Small Area Plan started with a smaller acreage of land, and now it's a larger swath of land, the citizens are asking for something different. I, for one, didn't feel like that it made sense to strip the ordinance completely, and so that's why I'm suggesting that, and I appreciate you offering the gasoline. I mean, I was just looking at it from a ordinance, it just makes sense leaving gasoline in, taking storage facilities out, and having them separated by two hundred feet from the main road. But nonetheless, I would go with the gasoline cells being removed, but I would think that same use to same use makes sense, not one use knocking out another use. And that's what the majority of the citizens of District Two have asked for.
And I just, I think both of y'all, both of y'all have spoken, and I do want clarification on the motion that's currently before us. What, can someone tell me we're removing, I think the motion was to remove the gas stations from the consideration altogether, and to remove the storage facilities as well?
That's correct. And also to increase the distance to a thousand feet for the remaining two uses on the list.
Okay.
But not to remove storage units totally, to bring that back, so they're not facing a major road. So, there would be a second...
That's got to be handled with a separate motion, though. That's got to be a totally separate ordinance.
Yeah.
Got to be dealt with separately.
Right, I said that in my motion.
All right, I'm just making sure we're clear on what was proposed.
For clarity purposes, when you say a thousand feet for two of them, is that a thousand from the car wash to the other item on the list, or is it from a restaurant to a car wash?
The only two left are car washes and oil change places.
Okay.
Right?
And those are the only two that would have to be a thousand separate?
Might want to explain, number one, I mean, A thoroughly, because it's more than just car wash.
I just want to make sure council is clear on the motion that's currently in front of us.
Yeah. So, for clarity purposes, I want to make sure I'm clear on this.
Yes, sir. So, the two uses that would be remaining with the motion on the table would be vehicle service repair and customization as one use, and then car washes and detail shops as the second use. And as the motion sits on the table, both of those uses would have to be separated by a thousand feet from both of those uses.
Okay. So, there wouldn't have to be a thousand feet between those in, say, a restaurant or something else?
Correct, because those would be removed from the list. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Car wash has to be a thousand feet from an oil change.
That's right. Or an auto repair shop.
Thank you.
That's right.
So, that's all I had. Over to you, Deb.
I like it.
Okay.
I'm good. I'm good.
Mr. Aggins?
I just want to remind everybody that I think tonight has been a wonderful thing, because we, the people, came out, and they ask for this council and this county government to listen to we, the people. I know that Allison has had, over the years, an extremely strong force of people who have been very concerned about their community and what happens to that community. I wish I had been on this council longer than a year and a half, because I guarantee you that we wouldn't have four warehouses in a row. I can guarantee you that. Our car washes within sight of each other, our oil change places one right after the other. I applaud her efforts over the years. I think she's done a masterful job. She has had tremendous result, tremendous people that have been very interested in not just what she wants, it is what they want. It is we, the people.
Well, my main concern is, as long as you're not taking individuals' property rights away. I couldn't care less. It doesn't bother me whether there's two gas stations, two car washes. I'm not that particular. I know that people got to have jobs, and we are not to pick winners and losers in businesses. The consumers that come to these businesses pick what businesses stay in business and what don't.
No, 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 ma'am. No, ma'am.
Well, I've been in business for myself majority of my life, in one of the toughest industries that there is. And if you stay in the business that I'm in, you don't complain about everything just like it is, because it's hard to make a living. And I feed a lot of y'all people, and I wish that y'all would understand to quit the dang griping about everything and get the facts on stuff.
So...
Ooh, yourself. Back up.
I want to read some things. No person shall be deprived of property without due process of law, nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation. That's our United States Constitution.
You're darn right.
Fifth Amendment. South Carolina Constitution, private property shall not be taken for private use without the consent of the owner, nor for public use without just compensation, first being made for the property. That's our South Carolina Constitution. I'll say this, I one hundred percent support us finding ways to find the kinds of businesses that our communities and that we all want and prefer, but I am not willing to trample on or over our constitutional rights or water down the Constitution. We have to find ways to accomplish these goals in a rational, reasonable way that keeps our Constitution intact. I would love nothing more than to have a Chick-fil-A and a shopping center across the street from me. I cannot tell somebody what to do with their property. Those are the constraints that we have as we're sitting up here. I want to ask you this, and this is, I think about these things a lot, because I think our do, our council cares about our community, our entire community. Imagine this, imagine that you own a lot in a residential neighborhood. Everybody around you is building their house. You're waiting for the right time. You're waiting, either you have to raise enough money in order to do your dream house, or you're trying to save it for your kid, so that you're hoping they'll come back and bring their grandkids back and build a house on that lot. Meanwhile, everybody's building their house around you in a residential neighborhood. But when it comes time for you to build your house, or give it to your children, you're told you can't build your house there. We took your right of way in the middle of this zoning code reorganization. We didn't give you notice. We didn't send you a letter. There was only eight of you that this applied to, but we didn't even bother to send you a letter and tell you that was going to happen to you. We did it because some other people said, you know, I'd rather have a park, I'd rather have a restaurant, I'd rather have something I'd like to have there. Is that right? Is that fair? Is that constitutional? No. No, it is not fair. It's not due process, and that's not how I'm going to interpret the Constitution, that's not how I approach decisions that way. There are two things that I really, really despise. One, lies, misinformation, twisting of facts or half-truths. And two, attempts to water down our Constitution or our due process. When I took the oath of office, I said I was going to do that. Now, when I look at this issue, this has been a very troubling issue for me because this was not handled the right way. It wasn't. This, this ordinance, what it did, and, and there's some conversation that the public came out and spoke to this. Well, the only people that came out tonight were people who said, "Don't do it," right? And yet, here we are talking about everybody wants us to do this because nobody likes oil changes and nobody likes this. But the only time that the public had an opportunity coming out was in a comprehensive plan. That was what is our vision for our county. It wasn't a six sixty ordinance. We didn't have the ordinance come out here and say, "Let's vet this ordinance, does this work? Does this accomplish what we want it to do? Does it slow down this use and allow us to incentivize another use?" That's not what happened. It got stuck in a six hundred-page recode. That's, that is what happened, that is not right. This ordinance took away existing property rights without any notice to the property owners. There was no debate from this council. The ordinance automatically rendered existing businesses, people who already did this business, they were rendered non-conforming. One of the main reasons we had to fix this was to fix the non-conforming use because people didn't even know that they have a business use that is now non-conforming and they can't use it again. This change, I would like to show the or, can, I would like to show this because I just think it's, it's important that we all be clear because I think we're, we're, we're all looking for the right solution for everybody. Here is what, in red, was the old Lake Wally overlay. In 2019, that expanded to the black part, that's the whole big black out there. That whole area is, I mean, it's at least five times the size of Clover. One size doesn't fit all, but there are these road configurations, so from, from the, in the original Lake Wally overlay, from the Buster Boyd Bridge to 274. Do you know how many parcels we're arguing about up here? We're talking about three parcels, two of which already have the right to do it, and this doesn't change anything. We're talking about one parcel. That's how much time we've spent on this. Going from the corner of that until the end of Highway 55, we're talking about four parcels. So, anyone that suggests that this council has not been willing to vet out these issues is completely wrong. We have really tried, and we have worked very hard on this. The ordinance itself, what was proposed, like Ms. Love said, was not proposed by us. It was put in there by a consultant, and we've now discovered this through recode, and it has to be fixed. The idea that the public comments were not considered is completely not accurate. And I am all for encouraging the uses that we want. If we want more res, restaurants, if we want more retail, then we need to go about it a constitutional way. We need to incentivize the uses. We need to, we need to, number one, send a, a written notice to the property owners, "We're doing this to you." I mean, how many of, it's maybe eight people? And we couldn't even bother to send them a written notice that this is what we're doing? That's not right. Imagine if it were you. I think we need to use our project development funds under economic development to help Ms. Love in this area. If there are uses that are being overused, let's figure out how to help these owners get a different use in there. That's the constitutional way to do it. Use a special exception. Say, for new uses, we're not going to let you do this unless you go to the Zoning Board of Appeals and ex, and prove to them that there's a need in that community to do that. But to just do this across the board has caused so much problems on this council, so much consternation. And that, and that's just the truth, and that's what I think folks need to hear, all of it. All that said, and it's, it was just some things that I needed to get off my chest because it continues to bother me that folks get their information from social media and don't understand all of the, the bits and pieces and the things that you have to factor into this. Um, what we have now is, is, is very reduced. What is proposed and what is on the table is very different than what we looked at before, and I'm not even really sure how it affects some of the people. For instance, an individual who has owned property for generations, owned a bait and tackle shop. They have an opportunity to sell it. Can they sell that to someone who's actually going to want to buy it under this scenario that's been proposed? I would like to know, I mean, does that allow this to happen?
Could you please restate the question?
Does the individual, does an individual who owns the bait and tackle shop, does that give that owner the, the opportunity to proceed with, um, selling her property that she's owned for years?
If, uh, we're thinking about the same parcel, then yes.
Are there any others? This, this solves the Harris Teeter problem?
Uh, if the Harris Teeter problem is the, uh, potential location of the fuel center, it does give them the option to essentially put it on any, anywhere on their site they would like to.
Thank you, sir. I'm willing to support this amendment, only because it, it addresses the issues. But I will, I will say to you, I think that this is the bad way to go about it. We have been talking about this for so long, but I, I will support this because I think it addresses the outstanding issues. All's in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries, five to one. Counsel to consider third reading of an ordinance to establish operating- Am I on the right place? Yep. Operating in capital budgets for the operation of the county government of York County for the fiscal year commencing July first, 2024, to provide for the levy of taxes for York County for the fiscal year commencing July first, 2024, to provide for the expenditure of tax revenues and other county funds, and provide for other fiscal matters relating to county government. When we do the budget, we do, like anything else, we need to make the main motion to approve the budget, um, and then any amendments follow after that.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve, there's a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all right. Do we have any amendments?
Uh, yes, I do. Um, well, first of all, I think the, for the public's understanding too, um, as part of this budget, um, I don't know, Kevin, if you want to talk just a minute about the debt that was paid off in, in the millage?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Um, I think the budget that was voted on in fiscal year seventeen for fiscal year eighteen,
Mm-hmm.
county council took steps to ensure that we would be in a financial position to pay the geo-debt, primarily the 2016 geo-debt that was issued through referendum, to pay that off when it became refundable, rather than have to go reissue, um, some additional debt or pay the higher rates that were in this, um, bond document. That plan worked out wonderfully. Um, in last year's budget, council voted to, actually, paying that debt off was part of last year's council vote. All that went into place as planned in April. So, the York County Debt Service Millage, um, next year will fall from four point four to zero mills. Um, that's accumulation over the last five years. County Council has reduced, I think, thirteen point four mills. They've given back to the taxpayers as part of that, as well as other steps we've been able to take to, um, reduce taxes for taxpayers.
Okay, four point four.
Yes, sir.
Good. Very, I want to share, the, the public hears that, so thank you, sir. Appreciate that. And so, I've got some amendments. Apologize for the cold here. Um, so the first amendment to the budget is the, um, is to change the social media expert position to a strategic communications director and add a grant writing position to the budget also, which these positions will be funded with interest income and request no increase in the taxes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second on the amendment, any discussion? I support this, I mean, it's clearly, um, going to help us with our goal of communications and doesn't result in a tax increase, so. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Do we have an, any other?
Yeah, next amendment, uh, amendment to the budget to provide one mill directed to ensure economic development reigns funded as is, uh, not through FLO revenue, to set aside forty K for Regent Park Study, a hundred K for contingency for any county, um, necessitated repairs, and the remainder to go to park operations, capital, um, slash land.
Seconds.
Motion and a second.
Can you explain that, what that is?
What's that?
Explain what all that is.
So, you've got a portion of this that would go towards, obviously, the operating cost of the parks, uh, as we hire more people, et cetera, they're going to actually-
What parks?
What, the, again, any of the parks, again, we'll have to talk through the details of it.
We need to do that now.
Okay, well, let's talk through it then. Okay. Um, so, I would probably recommend, you know, this based on, I, all parks. I would assume that we, we'd be looking at all parks as part of it.
That's the Lake Wally Park District?
My son, yes.
All parks?
All parks.
And what is the dollar amount of that?
Well, if you look at one mill, Kevin, what's it, one mill is-
One million eight hundred seventy-five thousand dollars.
Seventy-five thousand, right.
So, so, real quick, if I could jump in?
Yeah, go ahead, go right ahead.
Because I think, I, I'd like to break it down a little bit.
Okay.
Get into the details. So, what you shared about economic development fund, so in the current, uh, second reading, we had about a half a million that was coming out still from the economic development fund. So, that was the first piece, you, you recommended to not do that, just to add clarity. I want to make sure everybody understood that. Okay, so that, you got into then, I want to make sure I heard you right, po, potential future park operations and capital?
Yeah, so set aside forty thousand for Regent Park Study?
Right, so there's, so, in terms of Regent Park Study, staff shared Friday, uh, a, a quote that would allow, uh, staff to study the public culverts. So, that's York County-owned culverts, and what potentially we could do, uh, to fix anything that's found. So, we would study those culverts, and then the second piece of your motion on that was to set aside some funding in case there were fixes that were needed mid-year.
That is correct.
So, I want to make sure everybody understands that, okay?
That is correct.
So, I heard that.
Mm-hmm.
And so, there was forty thousand for the study, I, what did you say?
A hundred thousand for contingency.
A hundred thousand for contingency for the- So, then the, the last thing I heard you talk about were, were park, uh, potential future park operations, capital, and land.
Et cetera.
And so, if, if I were to kind of just ask clarifying questions, I think those are for future needs that are identified as a park's master plan is done this year, and other opportunities come up as we further discuss the strategic planning retreat starting on Friday. I don't know if there's any other details you want to share with that?
No, I think, I think you said it well.
What is land? What is land?
Um, well, I think it's to land preservation contingencies. So, based on if there is other, uh, parks that we are looking down the road to, uh, purchase or open, for example, in, oh, I know we've talked about in the past that we've looked at other properties, there's a study going on. So, we'll understand if there's other properties out there from a parks perspective. But again, this will give us the opportunity, because once we go into the full capacity of the parks business, um, this is going to be, help us baseline it and move forward with, you know, future needs as we go forward, so.
So, so, I'll tell you what my issue is. My issue is that the Lake Wally community gives one point one, um, million dollars to parks already, and this council was not willing to give any of that back. They were not willing to make us whole and give that money back to us, um, in the rep, in the form of that rec funding that we paid in and we never see again. And so, I don't understand why now you're asking us to, here, here we have another, a million, one mill, one million eight hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, um, when we couldn't get back our one point one million dollars in hospitality dollars, it wouldn't have cost anybody here, any, it wouldn't have cost anything, anybody here would not have affected the operations of parks, any parks being built, or, or anything about that. It would have simply gone back into the, to the pockets of the taxpayers in Lake Wally. So, I, I'm not able to support this. I don't like things, and I said this, you weren't here, but I said this when, um, Robert Winkler sprung something on us one night at third reading. And it kind of puts you on the spot, and it makes you look bad sometimes, but, um, I said that night that, um, it, it would be, um, you know, rare for me to approve something at last minute. We had a, we had a workshop, we canceled, and we could have been, we, you know, if, if people had motions they wanted to make, I think that's the time and place to make, make a motion, you know, because we've got a set, we've got a set workshop to do that. Um, but I, I don't like, um, last-minute things being thrown in, and I don't have enough, really don't have enough detail on this, but, but I, I really don't have a good taste in my mouth about that, um, that money not being able to give back. You did recommend that we get back four hundred and something thousand of that, but, um, as far as I'm concerned, Lake Wally is still very much in the hole, and I'm not going to be willing to, to, um, to, to, you know, start looking at more land. I don't know what other land we're talking about, and, and other parks, and, you know, all of our H-tax goes to Cataba Bend, and I think that's a great thing. But the increases in that, when we decided to do that, that was nineteen million dollars, and when we decided to put that money toward Cataba Bend, um, we didn't talk about where those overages were going to go. So, every year, the increase in hospitality dollars, I'm, I'm not sure where that money's going, but I just know how hard I tried to get it back into the pockets of the people that are my constituents in, um, the, in the Lake, in the, in the Field Day Park, um, Tax District.
Um, I can appreciate everything you just said, but one thing this does on the front end of what you said was, there was four hundred seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars that we decided to pay for economic development out of the general fund instead of it coming out of the Economic Development Fund. That's not the intention of that money. So, we found another way to pull that out, and something Josh provided to us early on when he came on with, with York County back May, May thirty-first, I believe it was. That left the balance of seven hundred seventy-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars, which meant that money to fund their budget economic development would come out of the, the Economic Development Fund as well. I don't think that makes sense, that's not the intent of that money. So, I think what this does, it takes the cumulative amount of that money, which is one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and has it coming out of one mill. A mill's worth one million, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, so you pull that out, there'll be six hundred and twenty-five left. So, if it's six twenty-five, what we know about our parks, our parks and our park needs are growing. And, I mean, I'll say this, you know, I've joined council eighteen months ago, and we went to the first budget reading. Golly, I don't know, y'all feel even this year, but I think all of us understand this budget more this year than we did last year. I know I do. And so, what, what I've come to realize is that, in York County, it hasn't always been this way, but our parks, now, I think I'm right by saying this, operate in the black. I don't think cumulatively Ebenezer Park operates in the black.
Ebenezer Park, over the last, I think, six, seven years, from an operational standpoint, is operating in the black. When Allison Creek was built, it sort of modeled after Ebenezer.
But not with capital needs, just so we interrupt you. The capital needs have been paid for through H-tax and through general fund expenditures.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, here's my point. Then, our park needs are not going to be decreasing, they're going to probably continue to increase with more parks, more sophisticated parks, Cataba Bend coming online and everything we got to do there. So, in my opinion, I mean, I, I'd like to see more than a one-mill holdback. I'd like, I'm not asking for this because it's not going to pass, I haven't called all y'all to sell you on it, but we're, the state's giving money back in a, in a tax refund to the citizens of South Carolina. We're giving back out of the four point four. I don't think you could pull enough out to set aside for parks and our needs for parks in the future. We're just finishing this park study, and we don't even know what's coming out of that. So, personally, I know traditionally, you go dollar-for-dollar and earmark for something you can justify. I just, I personally believe that, yes, you could set aside too much for parks, but parks are going to have an ongoing need from a staffing perspective and just bringing new parts online, parks. Bump said in the last meeting on June third, he wants parking District Four. In the budget, it's, I mean, in our budget book, I think it was in here, it listed at one point four million dollars. I don't know where that came from, but it is, it was in here, it was somewhere that I read. So, anyway, the needs are going to continue to grow from a parks perspective. So, if it's six hundred thousand or eight hundred and eighty-five, whatever the num, five hundred and eighty-five, I mean, that's a drop in the bucket for what we really need for parks.
Well, this is why I want to clarify, y'all. Uh, so, so Kevin and I are, are obviously doing the math as y'all share with us here, so we wanted to just share what we heard. And, and so, previously, we have been using some of those FLO funds for economic development in other budgets. So, that was a, more than a hundred thousand. So, what we heard in that motion was the four hundred and seventy-eight that's left. So, that was, you know, previously, in the first recommended budget, we said, "Let's, let's pay for all of economic development out of the, out of those funds." Y'all said, "No, let's do half." So, we, we pulled it back to four hundred and seventy-eight thousand. So, based on what you shared- So, based on what you shared, that's what we would take off. There would still be a little bit more than a hundred thousand that does, that has historically been used out of FLO for economic development. We would encourage that stay. So, you take the forty and the hundred thousand out, you're talking about about one point two million for parks, future parks operations, capital and land. So, that's what it would be. We would set that aside in a fund for, as things come up this year.
Clarification. I thought the deficit for economic development, when we came into the first reading, was one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is that correct?
There have been, council voted, I think it was a hundred thousand dollars to give from that money to the chamber. There was also been some money for the, I think, the I-77, other things that council had voted to earmark, the ten percent to go towards that. We are leaving, just as in what y'all were given after first reading, we're leaving those things in place. Council already decided to take that out of there. So, you have four seventy-eight, was the half before, and now four seventy-eight again. So, economic development is back to where they were basically in last year's budget as far as the portion coming out of that ten percent.
Let me ask it differently. So, when I ask for four hundred seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars to come out of the general fund, is there not seven hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars still left to fund economic development's budget? And is that money coming out of the Economic Development Fund? I may be off a dollar or two, but, but for the most part, do we have?
So, I'm going to see if I can explain it to you over here. Right now, we have five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, okay, was coming basically from the Economic Development Fund, all right? This is after the previous motion you'd made. That was the remainder, okay? So, basically, take a hundred thousand off the top of that, because that's always been there.
Right.
And so, that gets you across to the four seventy-eight.
Three-year commitment, a hundred thousand dollars for three years.
And then, and some other stuff in there. But, so that's how you get to the four seventy-eight. Okay, so, economic development as far as what's coming from the general fund, the transfer from the general fund, is going to be consistent within the past year, which I believe was the intent of council when they made the first motion, the motion made here.
Let me ask it this way, just to make sure. So, for, for budget year twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six, we're going to take a hundred thousand dollars out of the Economic Development Fund to give to the Chamber of Commerce on our three hundred thousand dollar commitment, but there's no money, other monies coming out of the Economic Development Fund to fund operations for?
It's, there are some, there are a couple of other pieces. This was done in a motion by Mr. Winkler maybe four or five years ago.
Okay.
It's maybe about fifty thousand dollars, I can't remember what it was, but, and we've consistently left that in the budget. It should be in the budget notes, we can go through and look at it. And that's been consistent for almost since the inception of this, when Mr. Winkler made his motion to take it out of that. We've not touched that, okay? So, that's still going to be in there. And then, any other monies that y'all have assigned out of that to go to the chamber or whatever else it might be.
I can appreciate your answer, thank you. Let me ask it this way. The two thousand twenty-four budget year that we're in right now, and compare that to the twenty-five budget year, is anything else coming out of the Economic Development Fund in two thousand twenty-five that was not taken out in two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-three?
No, sir, no, sir. So, we're consistent with that. Correct.
Thank you.
So, I just, I want to say that, I think that parks operating in the black is a great thing to strive for, but no matter how black it gets, I've got constituents that are operating in the red. And that, until that is, until that, until they are made whole with the rec funding for Field Day Park, I'm not going to support, I'm not going to support more. And I would love to, listen, I'm more about parks than anybody in this room, I promise you. I've created parks, long-term, lifelong parks for this county, and, and would love to do more and more of that. And, and I'm good at doing that. But I still feel like it's very important that the taxpayers who are paying for Field Day Park, they have been, every year for the past three or four years, we've been said, we'll kick that can down the curve, we're going to come up with a formula, oh, the formula doesn't work, we're going to do this, we're going to do this. And it has never, it's never been really a priority for anybody probably other than me and Perry Johnson and Tom Smith. And taxpayers don't even really know how much they're in the hole and what could be. So, I just think that that needs to be, I think that needs to be fixed. I'd like to get our, I would like to get our hospitality dollars back and feel good about that and then move forward with, I mean, whatever y'all want to do for parks and things. But I just feel like that's a neglected, that's something that this council is neglecting to, to fix and...
Any others on the amendment comments?
I support this amendment. Honestly, I think it's a very conservative approach to trying to address this. First and foremost, what it does is it doesn't pay for our economic development through FLOs. I think that's a very irresponsible way to pay for economic development through FLO revenue, because FLO revenue is basically given a cut to, to someone. And so, to use that money to then pay for the Economic Development Department is not appropriate. And number two, the Product Development Fund is something that I'm, I'm encouraged, we have a new county manager on board, he's going to help us look at what is the best way to approach that. I didn't give my diatribe over the Constitution and the takings that we have in the U.S. Constitution and the state constitution just for the issue on six sixty, because if we want to solve these issues that we're dealing with, when it comes to growth management, you cannot just take people's rights away to do it. You have to pay them for it, or you have to provide notice and they have to consent. And these ways, doing the, doing the economic development and finding ways to help incentivize the kind of businesses that we want, that is the approach that you take. That is how you encourage businesses that you want to come to the area without violating the Constitution. So, I think that keeping that fund intact is critical to us being, have this conversation as we do our retreat on Friday. I don't know how it got put into the budget to change that, but I do think that we can change this next year if we decide that's not an issue. But to have that wholesale change just kind of sprung on us doesn't give us the option to be able to address, how are we going to use these economic development funds in a way that helps control our growth and helps encourage and, and start attracting the kinds of business that we want here. Number two, this council has taught, talked it nauseam about the Regent Park issue. This puts in place a mechanism to fund that study and puts some funds in place in order to address the county. If there, if there are things that need to be fixed from that study, that puts funds in place to address that. I think that we need to do that, otherwise, why are we even thinking about this issue? And third, when it comes to our parks, what this does is this gives us the first step. And, and I think that the more that we become territorial, or I've got to be made whole in this one area to do this other, the reality is economic development funds, up until this point, have all come from basically District Five, because it's on I-77. So, if we all were to play that game, we end up in a place that we don't want to end up. We have to look at our county as a whole, we have to look at ways, how are we going to attract the kind of business we want, not the stuff we don't want. And in order to do that, we have to do it in a constitutional way. And so, I do think that this is a very conservative approach, even with this amendment. Our constituents are still going to get a three point four village decrease, but this does some things, and I've talked with folks in my district, this gives us a chance to say, even on a three hundred thousand dollar home, you're talking about twelve dollars. I'd rather you keep the twelve dollars and let's find a way to affect growth management in a constitutionally protected way and to address some of these concerns with our parks and preservation. And you can't do it without having those funds there in order to have that conversation. So, I fully support the amendment.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah, one, I have one more amendment. So, this next amendment again is looking at ways of us moving forward to continue to save the taxpayers' money as we've looked at special needs and requirements and what we're looking to do in the county. So, this motion is to reduce the millage for the York County libraries down by just two tenths of a mill. And that would reduce their budget to nine million, four hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars.
I'm sorry, I missed that motion.
It would be a motion to reduce the millage for the York County libraries by two tenths of a mill. That would bring their budget down to nine million, four hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars.
What's the dollar difference?
The dollar difference on this is three hundred and seventy-five thousand, but their last year's budget was nine million, two hundred and six thousand, seven, one hundred and seventeen. So, they're actually still getting an increase of two hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred dollars from last year. But it, but it allows us to save the taxpayers some money.
Second.
What is, I'm curious what management's?
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Love, starting us off, she would like to know, you want to repeat your question? She says she can't hear your question.
Can you hear me now? What is, what is management's recommendation on the library funding?
I think this is a policy decision.
I think, I think what happened with the library, well, what happened with the library is, the library board voted on a first draft before they knew what the value of the mill was going to be. So, they voted and approved that, and then the value of the mill came out. So, they just went in and said, all right, well, let's go ahead and get that too. So, they're already, they're getting an increase.
Yeah, they're still getting, yeah.
They're just not getting the full increase.
I guess I mentioned, they're still going to get a two hundred and eighty thousand, almost, two hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred dollar increase from last year with this.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I don't, I don't support this. I don't think this is, my recollection of what happened, and I've reached out to the folks that have worked on this, is that this is basically a millage reduction. For, if we're going to, what ended up happening was there was a vote on the millage when their millage was anticipated at a reduced amount. So, when they found out what their actual millage rate was, they pushed their budget to that. It looked like it was for security issues, it wasn't for adding on to other things. And I just think it's, it's, it's dangerous to me, because we have fire departments who get one number, who base their budgeting on a number, and then if the millage, if the millage number actually comes at a little bit higher, they're, they should be able to address that. I think that the, the board approved the second budget, six to one, the first one was approved unanimously. I just think that the better way to deal with this is through that board and having, having a board in place. So, all is favor of the motion of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No. Motion carries for two, two. Do we have any other amendments?
Oh, okay. I have an amendment, or a, what I'd like to propose, to transfer two hundred and nineteen thousand from the Flint Hill Fire Department fund balance to the twenty-four, twenty-five operating budget.
Second.
Is the motion clear for staff? Do they understand the purpose of the motion?
No, I'd like to ask a question. In previous conversations, y'all have asked us to move two hundred thousand into personnel. Is this in addition to that two hundred thousand you've already moved?
It is because of the situation they're in with having to bring on three, they would like to bring on three new battalion chiefs. They're putting aside additional firemen for the battalion chiefs, because this, they're, they're in a situation where they have, one of their battalion chiefs is retiring, another one is having double, triple duties within the department, and he needs to be more dedicated to his duties as battalion chief. And then, because of the amount of calls that they make, the tremendous amount that they have, they would like, or not like, but they really need to put on a third unit. So, they need a battalion chief for the third unit, as I understand it.
Yeah, I just want to make sure to share, and I shared this with chief in a meeting, y'all were there. I have very serious concerns when we're pulling this much money from fund balance. Fund balance is a savings account. And so, I would say this to any fire district. You know, we, we looked very closely to see what we could pull from that, and we felt very comfortable with two hundred thousand. But there is, there is not sustainable funding coming every year to pay for this additional two hundred and nineteen thousand. So, at some point, if they keep taking an additional two hundred and nineteen thousand out of fund balance every year, fund balance will be zero. And there is not funding for all their vehicles to replace them. So, who's going to pay for that? I have major concerns about the long-term financial sustainability of the fire districts as is. This adds to that. We need a long-term plan on how we're going to handle all fire districts. And I think if we do this for one, it's, it's going to make not just this one unsustainable, but it's going to make the overall plan unsustainable. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear. That two hundred thousand, staff felt very comfortable. And another, another two hundred and nineteen thousand, this money's not coming back next year.
Okay. So, I'm going to say one more thing. Okay, so, you're bringing in a consultant?
We want to, yes, that's, that's the long-term goal here. We, we need to look at the county as a whole and do a five-year and a ten-year plan for fire and EMS for York County. So, the, the structural changes that chief...
Now, would the consultant come in next year?
I hope to bring in a consultant this year, but I want to work with all the chiefs.
I mean, this year, yes.
And so, here's the problem. We need to make sure we have a five-year and a ten-year plan. The more commitments we make, it makes it harder to come up with a, a plan that all the chiefs would want to be a part of. So, I would really encourage us all to think about the county as a whole, as the chair mentioned about another topic, in, in light of fire and EMS, because we need to work together on this, not, not one fire district at a time.
Can I ask a question? So, let's, let's assume that in the next six months, that council has come up with a plan, and we've, I mean, there are obviously fire issues that we want to address globally and not doing this piecemeal. Can, we can have been the budget mid-year, once we get a plan together to address this or to, to determine that, can we not?
Sure, but I, I want that to be informed by the capital needs of each fire district. And I think that's what's missing here. They have a lot of capital needs in Flint Hill that they don't have money for. And, and that's not a part of this conversation right now, and that needs to be a part of the overarching county-wide conversation.
Are there any other comments, the motions currently on the table unless?
Just a clarifying question. Do we know for sure the two hundred and nineteen thousand dollar request is in addition to the two hundred thousand dollars already approved?
It is.
Is it in addition to the two hundred thousand dollars?
It is. There was a memo that was sent to all, I think it was sent to all of council, and I did not get a chance to speak with the chief, but this is for an additional battalion chief in addition to the two hundred thousand that council made the decision on prior to that.
So, in total, this would be another two hundred and nineteen on top of it?
Two hundred and nineteen, in addition. And I think they're, according to their presentation, they have a million in reserves. They believe that they can sustain this, this position for three years, and that before that time, we will have something in place to make it a sustainable position, giving all benefit to the, to the folks that are presenting this. That's, that was in the memo that was circulated.
And staff wasn't involved, and I wouldn't make that recommendation. Because I don't even know if vehicles are included in this for all three battalion chiefs. I don't, I have not been included in this.
Wouldn't it though, just a one-time request?
No. I mean, once you hire, this needs to be, it's for a position that's going to be recurring.
Well, we feel like the value of the mill in our area is going to continue to increase, which will, should put the money back into the fund balance, or put additional funding. I don't know.
And if staff looked at that, we don't think it's going to catch up to this, and we don't think that's, that differential will result in another two hundred and nineteen thousand. So, I mean, we're, we're happy to look at this. I told chief, I'm, I'm trying to work with him, and I understand his needs, but we've got to balance that with the needs across the county. And there's capital needs in every one of these fire districts.
So, any other comments from, before we move on to our, I'll say this, I'm one of those, the biggest supporters of our fire departments, and I think we've got to get this right, and I am committed to getting this right this year. We have a new county manager, we're looking at doing a consultant. I think we need to give it the opportunity to look at it holistically, and I think this will be one of the things that we look at personally for me, and I will certainly look at that. I just think doing it here, knowing that we don't have recurring funds, puts the cart before the horse, but I'm committed to looking at it as soon as we possibly can this year, and we don't need to wait till the end of this year to, to revisit it. That's my personal opinion. All's in favor.
Can I ask one other clarifying question?
The value of the mill, this year, wasn't it 187,500? That was the appreciation in the mill?
This is a special tax district mill.
Yeah, we'd, we'd have to look at the, the change. I don't have an attorney.
That's right, yeah.
All is in favor of the amendment? Say aye.
Aye.
Can you raise your hand? All opposed?
Opposed.
No. Motion fails for lack of a majority. Do we have any other amendments? Uh, we move now to the main, uh, move on the, um, motion to approve the, uh, budget. Main ordinance. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non, motion carries unanimously. Is that where we are?
Yep.
All right. Uh, new business. Council to consider the accommodations tax advisory committee's recommendation for fiscal year 2025 funding in the total amount of 171,250.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this?
Clarification, the Rock Hill, um, York County CBB, so 300,000 is already budgeted to them, so we're going to increase it by 93,650.
Yes, sir.
And the total amount collected for tax year of 2025 to be distributed to 171,250, is there any, are there any additional funds-
Correct, yes, sir.
-that are not accounted for? Okay.
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Can, I know at one point, why would we not, um, why would we not direct the, the Fort Mill History Museum operations marketing, as well as the cultural and heritage museums marketing to our CBB like we did last year? Was there a discussion on that? I know last year we looked at that, and we've got, I mean, our CBB, CBB does a tremendous job on that. Um, was there a discussion on that? I mean, I would, I would consider and entertain, I know that they requested, um, I think our CBB requested a little bit more funding in order to accomplish the things they want to do.
And I'll, I'll speak on, I spoke to Andy about this when the funding came in from the last meeting that got discussed, and Andy is very happy.
Can you, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I did speak with Andy regarding the CBB's funding, and he is very happy with what he's got, and I, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I don't believe he wanted to take money from any other entities like they did last year. So, I mean, management's recommendation is to stick with the committee's recommendation.
I mean, I, I defer to-
Not to put words in your mouth, but what you're asking for is for the CBB to do the marketing for these two, so they're not taking it in as their money to use how they want to. They're marketing for these two entities, which I didn't necessarily agree with last year either, but, I mean, if that's what you're saying, that, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that, that's, that's what we discussed last year, and I know that the CBB came and requested additional funding that was more than what they're getting out of this ATAX.
So I'll make this comment, compared to last year, the presentation that Andy gave, yeah, I wish our company were doing what he's doing with social media and marketing. It's beyond impressive, probably the best done in York County.
It is.
So if he took that, and he did apply it to these two, I would guess they would have more success than they've had, but it sounds like he's asked you all not to do that this year.
He's asked not to do that.
I don't want to put words-
He's asked not to do that, but he also asked for 150,000, and he's only getting 93.
Agreed, yeah.
Can we defer this? And I'd like to-
No, ma'am, you cannot.
Why not?
Because this is the last meeting of the fiscal year. We can schedule a special call maybe.
Well, let's make sure that we don't do that again. Let's make sure that we don't put this on the agenda when we don't have time to address it.
Okay.
To do what?
We need it earlier.
Y'all, y'all did fund those two agencies you listed last year, though. If you look at the FY24, uh, column, you just didn't fund them to the same amount that they're being recommended this year. So that might be something to look at.
I just think having a little bit of time for council to consider it, and it not appearing on the budget when we don't have time to, to have that discussion is, is what I'm concerned about. So what if I make a motion to, um, give the, um, cultural heritage museums and the Old English District the same amounts that we gave them last year? That would be, um, 12,500 and 13,000 among the right lines. Yeah. Are those the ones, or was it?
But we'd have to take it away from somewhere else, because you're, you got 171,250 to allocate.
No, but to give it to the CBB, to, to-
But I, but didn't you make the comment that the CBB would prefer not to do that?
Andy didn't directly say that anything's happy with this, and I said, I would imagine Andy doesn't want those to be cut. But to be clear with what Ms. Love's motion, if she's trying to make, are you saying instead of the cultural heritage getting the 20,000 that are recommended, 12,500, which you gave them last year, and then the Fort Mill History Museum-
Yeah, I was on the wrong one.
-instead of the 8,600 to get 4,000 that they got last year?
Yes.
Is that your motion? Okay.
And Old English. And, and the Old English District would get the 13,000 instead of the 15.
Okay, all right.
I would support that.
So then we would give the, the CBB would get the, the, the overage from last year.
To allocate the same amounts, and give the overage to the CBB.
So the motion's been made, this is an amendment. Ms. Love has made an amendment. Is there a second to her amendment?
I'll second.
Yeah.
Actually, we can't do it that way. We need the main motion to change. So who made the motion to approve? Mr. Aldette?
Yes.
Will you agree to the amendment?
I agree to the amendment.
Who was the second?
I think I was.
I assume you agree with the amendment.
I do.
Okay. Um, is, is the motion clear for staff and management? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non, motion carries unanimously. Council to approve first reading by title only of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an infrastructure credit agreement by and between York County, South Carolina, and that certain entity or entities identified by the county as Project Rose, whereby certain property will be subject to certain statutory payments in lieu of taxes and benefit from certain special source credits. The placement of the property compromising, comprising Project Rose within the boundaries of Amity County Park and other matters related there, too.
Yeah.
Motion.
Motion.
Second. Second, yep. First, second, third.
Do we have a, okay, so the motion is to approve, right?
We got three motions, yeah.
And a second. Did you catch that, Karen?
Sounds like it's unanimous approval.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All is in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing non, motion carries unanimously. Committee and other reports, Finance and Operations Committee, Chairwoman Allison Love.
All right, we met this afternoon at 5:30, and present were Councilmen Atkins and Aldette, and we had, uh, we considered applications for service for the York County Library Board, two spots there. Charles Robinson, um, was recommended for a first term, I'm sorry, for a second term, reappointment of Charles Robinson for a second term. Let me get in my groove here. And, um, for District Six, the, um, recommendation for the approval of Carol Herring for a first term. And then it's the end of the year, fiscal year, so we have some discretionary funds to, to give out, long list these, so, um, I'm just going to give you the last part of the sentence on all these. District One to Positive Action Service Dogs in the amount of 2,500. District One to Riverview Fire Department in the amount of 1,500. District One to Fostering the Family in the amount of 1,500. District One to Defending the Fatherless in the amount of 1,500. District Two to Habitat for Humanity in the amount of 3,567. District Two to May Day Project in the amount of 1,000. District Two to Catawba Riverkeeper in the amount of 1,000. District Two to Clover Women's Club in the amount of 1,500. District Two from this, I'm sorry, District Two to Camp Thunderbird in the amount of 4,000, as for the fireworks shows dedicated to the fireworks they're trying to raise money for. Um, District Three to American Legion Code 66 in the amount of 595. District Three to Sharon Volunteer Fire Department in the amount of 1,655. District Six to Feed the Hungry in the amount of 2,000. District Seven to Young Life in the amount of 2,000. And we had a finance and operations, um, we approved the minutes from the prior finance and operations committee meeting. That was all.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, we do have one citizen concern, Liz Duda with the Bike Ped Coalition of York County to present York County, to present council a recommendation from the Fort Mill High School Walkability Study Report. Thank you for waiting.
Not at all, thank you. But thank you very much for your service. You guys are doing good, hard work. So, yes, I am Liz Duda. I am with the Bike Ped Coalition of York County. We are a collaborative, community-based coalition, which includes government and non-governmental groups, schools, sports, and recreational clubs, and interested citizens. We support York County and its communities becoming more bicycle and pedestrian and roller-friendly. So I'm here today to present the walkability assessment that we did around Fort Mill High School on February 9th, 2024. I will also refer you to a, the long report, which was dated March 11, 2024, and that has detailed, detailed recommendations behind, uh, what, what I will share with you today. I, um, so this, uh, we're making this presentation to various constituents. Uh, we've already made it at the Fort Mill School District, um, and at the RFATs meeting, and it was presented to the Fort Mill High School School Improvement Council. So thank you for this opportunity to present to you today. As a reminder, all of our grandparents walked three or seven miles to school in snowstorms and blistering heat, and we want the same for our children. This is a picture outside of Fort Mill High School of what it is, uh, one of the exits that we looked at. This is one of our groups walking, um, towards, towards, uh, out of, out of the high school. So it's not necessarily favorable conditions, and I'm going to see how this works. Ooh, it works. Okay, so, um, we are, what a walkability study is, is that we, um, sought to identify concerns and, uh, that, and ways to make it safer for children and community members to be able to walk to and from school. We would like to implement, to encourage the implementation of policies, practices, and the built environment to make it safer for students and to community members of all ages and abilities to be able to walk in this area. And we, we also were looking for collaborations, um, and, and accountability by the multiple partners. Um, and here is another, that picture, oh, I did it. Oh, well, that picture was of another exit, um, coming out of Fort Mill High School. They actually do have a crossing guard. Um, and this might be, if we were looking at that picture, it would be a time to remind you, these are young inexperienced drivers that are leaving the high school, so think about them circulating in these neighborhoods. The background, so parents came before the Bike Ped Coalition of York County. They've also, uh, gone to Fort Mill School District and, um, RFATs meeting, Town of Fort Mill, and said, we would like our kids to be able to walk and bike safely to the high school. It turns out teachers have also been pointing this out for years. Administrators also had concerns, and we got all of their input into the, into the, the, the study and what we should be looking at. The Fort Mill High School Cross Country and Track Team runs in this area. They ultimately can get over to the greenway for their trails. There's other opportunities for them to run in the neighborhood. And, um, and we, we, we got a lot, we got a lot of input into what routes to choose, including from York County. Okay, the assessment area. So we had four groups that walked, uh, walked the routes in the morning, and then some of us came back in the afternoon to actually count the number of students that were on the walk. You can see, uh, so here's a map of the routes that we walked. It is a high-impact area. It does have significant traffic congestion, but it's, it's walking distance to Kingsley, to Baxter Village, to Harris Street Park, to the hospital, to St. Philip Neri, to the National Guard Recruiting Center and Armory. So there's, it's, it would be great to make it walkable for everybody in the community. All of these routes that we walked were under one mile from the school. Um, some of them, yeah, they all led to neighborhoods, so if, for example, walking down, um, towards the 160, the Peach Place Apartments are on that road, and we did see one kid bike home to that area. So that's the map of the area that we looked at. The, we were, also had significant collaboration. We had participants across municipalities, the county, the state, school district, law enforcement, crossing guard supervisor. Parents joined us, community partners, and thank you to the York County Transportation Planner and the York County Sheriff for joining us. Um, we, so, um, and speaking of the collaboration, that leads me to our first recommendation, which is that the Fort Mill School District, Town of Fort Mill, York County, and the South Carolina Department of Transportation continue to collaborate to make, uh, make it safe for the neighborhood students to be able to walk and roll around the schools. We each have a role that we can play. You folks are policymakers, you have access to funding, and the community would welcome your support. The second recommendation, um, this one is that we, we recommend it to the school district that they set the target number for the students that walk and bike to school. So interestingly, 2,000 students live within one mile of the school, and over half of them live within, 2,000 students attend the school, over half of them live within one mile, and, um, 200 of them live within half a mile of the school. Not a single neighborhood is zoned for walking or biking to school because it's not considered safe, so all of the neighborhoods have buses that go to school. Um, so if more students were walking, think about less congestion on the roads and in the buses. Uh, we counted about 30 students walk into school, walking home from school the day that we did the assessment, and so it's an estimated about 30 to 50 of those, 2,000 students walk or bike home from school at Fort Mill High School. That's the first recommendation, and that's an immediate one. Okay, second recommendation, uh, th- this one is, is also an immediate one. We encourage, uh, the signage to get fixed speed limit. So I think this falls within the SC DOT realm. Fix the signage, uh, look at the speed limit, um, and, and, um, and pointing out that Town, Fort Mill School District, Town of Fort Mill, and the City of Tiquake recently did resolutions for SC DOT to try to address these issues, signage, speed limit, um, school done. So we saw some erroneous signings, some confusing marks, and we have also recommendations about how to make it better. Also immediate, there are hazards that we identified that could be remedied.
Thank you, Ms. Duda.
Done?
The, the six minutes is up just a little bit ago. If you've got your PowerPoint and you want to share it with the entire council, I'm sure that our, um, clerk de counsel can make sure that it gets circulated to all of us.
Okay, should I go to the slide 11, the overall recommendations?
If you want, you got like-
Yeah. Yes, sorry.
A few seconds?
Thank you. So, uh, yep. So some of, uh, what I intended to show you is some were short-term fix, immediate fixes, some short-term, some medium, some long-term. The longer-term ones that you need to, the, are figuring out the built environment, what sidewalks and multi-youth paths can be put in. So we identified areas where alternative paths could be put in, and we encourage you to collaborate to address it. Sorry for taking too long. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Key takeaways were actually-
We appreciate you waiting patiently tonight, and we'll make sure that council gets a copy of your whole PowerPoint.
Thank you, and the report, too, please. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember, new non-agenda comments?
Yes, just one. In light of the, uh, passage of the third reading for the Lake Wally separation of uses, I'd like for consensus from council to ask staff to begin to draft the language on the self-storage ordinance that would be 200 feet from a main road. Um, so if they'll work on that language and bring something back to us to consider, I'd love to get consent on that.
Do we have four councilmembers who want to refer that to committee?
Yep.
Any objections? All right, we'll refer that to committee for study and recommendation.
Thank you.
Any other councilmember, new non-agenda comments?
I do. Um, I don't know. Does anybody know, uh, Karen, maybe? How many people, um, are second and third level overflow halls, floors?
I don't know. I don't remember the number.
Maybe 50, at least 50, or around that.
Fifty-one. The, the fourth floor is not as large as the third floor.
Okay.
Maybe so about-
Well, yeah, third and fourth.
Total-ish.
Okay.
So I just wanted to make everybody aware that, um, uh, first of all, thank you to my community for coming out tonight to express their concerns. Um, they've, um, they've been through a lot, and we're going through a lot. I just wanted council to know that I just got a, a text message that the, um, third and fourth floor, uh, overflow rooms were full of, of, um, Fort Mill, uh, the Fort Mill community, and also, um, the hallway, as I understand it, was pat. So they showed up big time. Thank you very much.
So I just want to let Lake Wally know you need to get here a little earlier next time, because if that SILFAD group's coming back, you're going to need to-
Do what?
Do what?
If that SILFAD group's coming back, Lake Wally needs to get here a little earlier next time.
Yeah, exactly.
They were up in that overflow room.
You have any other comments?
Yay, we passed the budget.
Somebody needs to make a motion for executive session.
I just want to say thank you to Kevin and our new county manager, who just came in right in time to help us out with this, with this budget and everything and counsel it. Every year, the budget is a, is a stressful, kind of a stressful time, and, um, this is my last time working on the budget, so I'm kind of excited. But, um, anyway, it's, it's always a good thing to get it behind, just move into a new year.
Do, can, do we have someone else who will make the motion for executive session? Is there anything other? You got to read it. You got to read it off the list.
I'll just put, I'll just close mine out, sorry.
Make a motion for executive session.
I make a motion for executive session, um, for the receipt, to receive, um, legal advice, a litigation slash legal update, and, um, there are contractual matter regarding retention of outside legal counsel.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All is in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll move into executive session. Thank you. We are out of executive session. No action was taken. Do we have any motions?
We do. Motion to retain the Booker Law Firm as outside counsel for contractual matter as discussed during executive session.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.